I don't have a gavel. But here's your gavel. Good evening. It's a call to order, the August 7th, 2018 City of Angels Council Meeting. If you could please stand for the plug.
(inaudible). To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Local?
Mayor Follendorf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Bee Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Matildee?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
We have a quorum.
So we have two items from the last meeting, closed session. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Direction was given to staff. Item B, conference with labor negotiator, direction was also given to staff. Item three, approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would wish to move an item from the agenda?
I'll move we approve it. Second?
Any public comment? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Next item, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda. State law prohibits the council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Moving on. Item five, consent agenda. We have one item on the consent, and that is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2018. Is there a motion to move?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Two abstain, three in favor. Okay. On to regular agenda. Item A, public hearing. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 484. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Angels amending section 17.34.080. This is part of the municipal code clarifying when conditional use permits and site plan reviews are required in commercial and business attraction expansion zoning districts. At this point, I will turn it over to Amy.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this is the second reading of this ordinance. Staff asks that you open a public hearing and adopt the ordinance and direct the city clerk to publish the ordinance in accordance with the directions in the ordinance, which is within 15 days. It would then go into effect on September the 7th, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
No? Okay.
I was going to ask a question. I just wondered a kind of a simplified version of exactly what this does.
It removes inconsistencies between one portion of the ordinance and another with respect to when you have to get a site plan and when you don't.
Okay. So site plan then is the focus?
Is the focus.
I see.
There's a couple use permit ones in there too, but it is primarily site plan.
Okay. Thanks.
So, any other council question, comment before I open? Nope. Okay. I will now open it to public hearing, so if you wish to comment, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Debbie Pawnee with Destination Angels Camp, and on behalf of the Board of Directors of Destination Angels Camp, we support this ordinance. It makes it a little bit easier for business to get started here in Angels Camp, which is what we're all looking for and needing. And I'd just like to clarify, because I do hear this rumbles in the community, whether or not this ordinance pertains to new construction or existing buildings within the City of Angels. If that could be clarified.
This pertains primarily to new or expansion, significant expansions of existing businesses.
Did I answer?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other public comment? With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Is there any other further discussion by council? Is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Can I ask, please, that you amend your motion to waive the second reading and approve the ordinance?
I...
Adopt the ordinance.
I move to waive the second reading and to adopt the ordinance 484.
Can I second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item B, Angels Camp Community Club Presentation. And this will be Cora. So this is a presentation by the Angels Camp Community Club. There's a picture up here, and you will go ahead and give the... Is it hard to see? Yeah.
You're being blinded.
Oh, it's fine.
The shadow across the face too.
Yeah, it's fine. Totally make it.
So in our packet, in the agenda, there's multiple...
Amanda?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, in order to record, they actually have to have that light glaring in their face.
It's fine. It's really snowed outside, so we haven't been tanning. Maybe I'll just leave with a little more color. We'll be fine. I like it.
I'm more concerned about the micro...
The microphone.
The shadows right straight in your face with it.
The mic?
Okay.
Good evening.
Hold on. We will... Yep. Biggie busy.
So I am here tonight on behalf of the Angels Camp Community Club. My name is Cora Brolio. We are a group of private citizens who have stepped up to raise money to replace the park play structure in the Utica Park. Our club began this project by asking residents of Angels Camp what they wanted to see in the next park play structure. Common answers we heard were safety, increased visibility, shade was a big one, a separate play structure for toddlers, more interactive features, access for children with physical limitations. We reached out to Miracle, who's the model that you see in front of you here. They're the original vendors of our existing play structure. The play structure in Utica Park is over 20 years old. The warranty on that existing structure expired almost five years ago. The Miracle vendor was actually really impressed at how well it had withstood the time even with the missing and broken slides. So Miracle put together three models for us of varying price points that incorporated the community feedback. We used these models as an approximate fundraising goal for ourselves. We didn't agree to or sign anything with Miracle. You know, this is very fluctuating at this point based on what the community wants or the funds that we're able to raise, and we're not married to anything at this point. But Miracle did have the best warranties in our research, anywhere from one year up to 15 years. They use post-consumer recycled materials, antimicrobial paint options, and just the visible example of the structure still standing down there after 20 years to us said that this was a good vendor that we should partner with. In a previous meeting, you... The City Council had agreed to waive certain fees and liabilities. Part of our fundraising is going to require us to ask you to waive the fee for... The $250 fee for the kitchen area in the park. We have partnered with the Calvaros Community Foundation and are doing a variety of fundraising, just little things at this point. Julie Douglas is allowing us to set up a booth in the park and sell tickets for a Disneyland drawing, so we're there every Friday night if you want to come by and say hi. We're also selling canvas tote bags with photos of historic elements from the downtown district that a local woman made for us. But our biggest fundraiser at this point is a free community event in the park. It's a concert with a musician named Jason Eady, and that's what we'd ask you to waive the fees for, is it will be a free concert. It'll be Monday, August 27th at 6:30, but sales of food and drink will go all to the park project. That's together with Tim Oskey, Whiskey Slide Production in Akba. So thank you for your time, and we hope to see you at the concert in the park. Do you have any questions about our fundraising efforts or about the play structure?
I'm here.
You don't want to ask me about the swings? I have a whole speech about swings. Come on.
Sure.
What about the swings, Cora?
Yeah, what about the swings?
Are there going to be adult swings?
There is adult... I'm so glad you asked. There's something in this play structure called a generational swing, so it took the toddler swing and then added a platform so that adults and children could swing together. So there is adult swing.
How about that?
It also has handicap access. There's decks that people with physical limitations can access. So really, our goal was, it's a community park. Everyone in the community should be able to play here. So that is our focus for this park.
I just wanted to thank you for putting out all that time and effort and, you know, the commitment and enthusiasm that I see, and we really appreciate this.
Well, and thank you guys for making it easier for us. It's infinitely worth it. Angels Camp is a really great place, so we're just happy to make it that much better. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Nope. Yep. I think that's it.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you, Cora.
So do we need a mo... I think we need to ask for $250 after all the work they're doing.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to grant that this time? I'll make the motion that we waive any fees for their fundraiser.
Moved by Councilmember Bee Hill, seconded by Councilmember Matildee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay. Our next agenda item is going to be a presentation by City Gate, and they will be presenting the City Finances, stabilization strategy, and organizational review. So what is going to happen is the slide is going to come down, so we're going to break for about five minutes so we can set up the slideshow. Council will go into the audience with everyone else. You can ask questions. You can come up... I don't know if there's a wireless mic.
Yeah.
Okay. So there'll be a mic that you'll be able to speak into, to ask your questions. Some questions may be deferred back to council because it may be more... Something more complex that is going to be a dialogue up here, so just be prepared for that if that happens. We'd like to keep the questions as, you know, short as we can so we can get to everybody and get through the presentation as well. So with that, we'll break for... Is there anything else that staff?
No, and I just would like to introduce Jane Chambers and Andy Green. They will be doing the presentation on City Finances tonight, so thank you for being here, and we can go ahead and break.
Okay.
Break. Okay. Well, good evening, Angels Camp. Andy and I are delighted to be here tonight with you. We know this topic can be one where your eyes want to glaze over, but Andy's wonderful, and he's developed a slideshow that probably won't keep you on the edge of your seat, but he's going to walk you through basic Angel Camp finances. And the reason we thought this was so important to do as a first part of this study is just to give us all the basics and the framework in which we're looking at Angels Camp for the study that has been requested. And again, I'm Jane Chambers. I work with City Gate Associates. City Gate Associates is a local government consulting firm, and they do studies all over California as well as nationally, and I've been working with them about three years. I feel a real kinship with Angels Camp because I lived and worked as city manager of Ukiah in Mendocino County. Some of you may know that area. And tonight, my heart's with them because of the fires that are raging in Mendocino County. But that was an area that's not unlike Angels Camp. There's some differences, but it had to really count its money carefully and have a strategic plan for dealing with its current financial situation, so... But many of the beauties and benefits of a small community like you enjoy in that area. And Andy's going to introduce himself when he comes up, but we just wanted to, as the beginning introduction to this news that you're going to hear tonight, is that we're really impressed with Angels Camp as a team. Our fellow team members, Jay Corey, and he's been a city manager in California well over 35 years, helped many, many cities financially, and we're just very impressed with what we see in Angels Camp, with what your staff is doing, with the resources that they have, and with the community overall. Like your citizen said a little earlier on the park, Angels Camp is a great place. So we're very happy to be here with you tonight, and we just ask you to listen to the presentation. We have plenty of time. We are here to answer your questions, and we just want to leave you... The outcome we want to leave you with tonight is a better understanding overall of Angels Camp's financial situation, both present and in the future. So with that, I'll let Andy take over and go through the slides.
All right. Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that introduction. As Jane mentioned, my name is Andy Green. I'm also with City Gate. A little bit about me before I get into this exciting presentation that I'm going to talk to you about on the financial situation. A little bit about me, I have over 35 years of municipal finance experience throughout California and Nevada, and Finance Director of four cities. Handled budgets in excess of $600 million, dealt with a number of financial situations where strategic planning, financial overall planning was necessary, revenue generation and enhancement. So you... Dead issuance and taking advantage of investment opportunities, all have fallen under my purview at one time or another in my career. So I'm also really, really thrilled to work with Angels Camp. I've worked with... Through with City Gate on a couple of other smaller cities than I did when I was in the business, so to speak. But there are certain things that doesn't make any difference what size organization you have as far as a city. There's some common areas and common things that cities need to be successful. Financial... Strong financial management, goals and policies, you know, those types of things doesn't make any difference if your budget is, you know, 10 million or 100 million. Those type of components are needed. So my experience in those particular areas, again, I think will hopefully do Angels Camp well as we're going through this financial component. One of the things that I wanted to emphasize is that this particular presentation will be... I'll be presenting two times again tomorrow, and my understanding is that it will be videotaped. So in this particular presentation, my plan was not to go into as much of the finance type 101 components that I will... Excuse me. That I will do tomorrow. Because again, what I think is important is to at least give you a framework of how municipal finance works so that you understand that you can't... The City of Angels Camp, just like any other entity, can't just basically take all the money and spend it on whatever they want to. There's restrictions, there are legal requirements, and a lot of folks get in trouble if they violate those. And so it's more complicated when you're operating a municipal financial situation. So I'll get a little bit more into that at my presentations tomorrow, but they will be videotaped, so you'll be able to look at that. All right. So my presentation format, besides going through the financial components of Angels Camp that we found, I also want to talk a little bit about where you're heading and the indications are where you're heading based upon your spending patterns and things that are happening here in Angels Camp. So I'll be doing some of that also in my presentation. It's broken down into looking at your total operations, all funds, and I'll talk real quickly about funds in a minute, your general fund, water funds, sewer funds, and then everything else lumped into others. So I'll be talking about the financial pictures of each of those particular sections. All right. And with that, before we go into the overall interview or financial overview, the definition of a fund, you'll hear... Some of you may have heard some of the council or the city administrator or finance director or finance officer talking about funds, general fund, water fund, sewer fund. Again, as I pointed out earlier, those particular components as far as how you keep your money straight are requirements. They're not something that is... They're just arbitrary, that they're sticking money into various separate operations. They're required legally to do that. Water fund deals with water operations, capital, anything dealing with the water component, both revenue side and the expenditure side. So each of those individual funds have their own set of requirements and responsibilities, and then anything that doesn't fall into one of those particular funds is lumped into the general fund. And so that is the larger, more flexible fund when you hear that term, general fund. That is what they're referring to. That's also the fund that when you hear the budget being balanced, typically they're referring to the general fund so that... Because that, again, is the most flexible fund. That's where you usually account for, you know, police and fire and some of the other general operations of the city. So as I go through this, and I mention fund, hopefully you'll have a better idea of kind of what I'm speaking to. All right. This first summary basically shows all funds combined what the City of Angels Camp has generated over the past five years. Just to go over the slide itself, starts in fiscal year 1213, and these actuals come directly out of your annual financial report, audited annual financial report. Goes actual through 1617. The estimate for 1718 is the... Based upon information that you have for your last fiscal year. The fiscal year hasn't been closed yet. You still have some work to do as far as getting that audited, but based upon information that we found spent to date, this gives you an indication of where it's anticipated that your 1718 budget will end up, and then your actual recently adopted 1819 budget. So this is a combination of all funds and a couple of important things I want to point out with this, and I think that Jane or Melissa pointed out that what we overall found is that Angels Camp, you're not going over a cliff financially. So I'll put that to rest right now. But you are heading for that cliff as it stands right now, and I'll point out a number of observations that point to that fact. So you have some time to do some things, and luckily, there's a lot of cities that either through kind of ignoring the problem or whatever, they did continue to go and went over that cliff. And probably don't have to mention places like San Bernardino and Stockton and some of those individual places that started out fairly vibrant, and they just had a bunch of different bad practices, and they didn't have enough good ones to counter those to prevent them from going the bankruptcy route. Angels Camp is nowhere close to that as it stands right now. I really applaud the council and Melissa for bringing us in to take a look at these issues, to develop plans to address those now and not waiting until you are teetering on the edge of that cliff. So I think this is... Hopefully will help and provide you with some guidance after we finish the report of where you should go. So a couple of things I wanted to point out on this particular slide is that if you... Slide reflects revenues and expenses. It reflects the operating results for each of those fiscal years. It also shows the fund balance, and the fund balance is like your savings account. You know, you have money coming in, you have expenses going out, and hopefully at the end of that time that you take care of all of those, you have money left over that you can put into savings. That is a fund balance. And so if you hear that term, or as I refer to that term, that's what I'm talking about, your fund balance amount that says, here's what your savings account represents. And so this slide shows what you began the fiscal year with as far as savings and what you ended the fiscal year with, and it also shows the what's called unassigned fund balance, which is the most flexible fund balance. That's like when you'd go through and say you have a savings account and you wanted to set aside some of the money for a trip that you know you were going to take. So you have a certain dollar amount in the fund balance total or the savings account total, but you kind of restrict it. You set some of it aside in your mind because you know you're going to use it for a particular item, and then what's left is kind of opened up for emergencies. That... What's left that's opened up for emergencies is what we entitle in municipal finance as the unassigned fund balance. So this particular slide shows you that, and this, again, as I pointed out, is for all of your funds combined. One of the things that you need to note is if you look at the operating income or loss, which is... Hopefully you can see that. Net operating income, loss, fourth line down or far... Fourth row down. As you can see, those brackets are bad things, as you can imagine. You've been deficit spending in all your funds combined since 2013, which means that you've overspent what you've brought in pretty consistently every single year over the last five years. That trend is a very, very bad trend, and if you notice, going forward, it seems to be getting a little bit... Larger and larger, and something, again, that you need to take care of. And I'll, like I said, I'll break this down as I go through my presentation as far as the components of that. In some, they're worse than others as far as the different funds. But you also have had some anomalies that you had to face here within Angels Camp, actually statewide or countrywide, nationwide. There's a governmental accounting standards board that municipalities, schools, counties basically develop their financial strategies and financial reporting around. And back in 2014, this standards board put together a set of standards that required the entities to recognize pension obligation, net liabilities. So not just what you have on a year-to-year basis, but what you expect at the end of the 30-year term for your PERS. In your case, it would be PERS. And so now that's having to be recorded also in your operating components. And what happened, like in most agencies, if you look at fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 1516, you see 918,000 for something called prior period adjustment in 1415 and 1.3 million in 1516. That was a requirement that basically brought the City of Angels Camp up to standards as far as the reporting requirements per the governmental accounting standards board. That has been provided or was provided by the PERS organization, which handles your retirement fund, and basically they did the calculation for you, but by the time they got it to you, your year that it was impacted had already closed. And so anytime you close your books, get your books audited, and they're closed, and you have something that comes up that basically impacts that prior fiscal year, auditors report that as a prior period adjustment. And so those two items are things that basically brought up to standards your outstanding PERS liabilities and brought them into those particular couple of years. The years going forward, while you don't have any prior period adjustments, at least for that particular component, is because they're included in the year that you were doing it. So you got the information from PERS, recorded it in your books, and so they're already included in the expense liabilities. So but again, that set aside, it gave you a couple of big spikes in that, but that set aside, as I pointed out before, even after that, you continue to deficit spend, which is, again, the thing that you want to avoid. This basically is just a graphical representation of what I just told you, give you an idea of kind of graphically that you're showing a deficit. give you an idea of kind of graphically that you're showing a deficit in every single year, starting back to twelve thirteen. All right, let's talk about the general fund, which is the more flexible fund, as I pointed out. That's where you pay for your police and fire, a lot of your general services, recreation is in there and the like. And the format of this particular slide is the same one that I just explained to you through with the total of other funds, except this one is particular for the general fund. And normally this is the one that kind of indicates truly where an entity is heading as far as operationally. So as you can see from this particular component, you had a prior period adjustment in this one also. This one however, was not for the PERS component. You had a positive adjustment for some additional revenues that happened in prior years that didn't get recorded. So you had in this case a positive effect in fiscal year fourteen fifteen. But if you look down at that fourth line again, you can see, as I pointed out in the previous... So as I was pointing out here, if you look at that fourth line, you're still at the general fund, which is your most flexible fund, which is the one that if you have problems with, can lead to some, the insolvency and those type of things. That fourth line, again, you're in a deficit spending mode. The dollars are not huge. I mean, again, but remember your budget here, general fund budget is about three point four million dollars a year. So again, the fact that you're deficit spending at all as far as a policy should be discontinued. You need to, just like you're doing it with your, hopefully with your home expenses and like you try to get to a point where you have a surplus at the end of a particular period and not deficit spending and spending down your savings. This particular slide was put together based upon your initial budget. My understanding is that there were some changes that were made to the budget for eighteen nineteen that actually increased that deficit for eighteen nineteen. So again, you're kind of going in the wrong direction on that particular component. What we'll talk about later on as far as some of the preliminary recommendations is, one big one is to get out of that deficit spending mode. What you're showing, what I'm showing here on the bottom line, cash balance. Remember I had mentioned on the other slide that that unassigned fund balance is the most flexible part of your savings. And so what I wanted to show with this cash balance line, because a lot of, sometimes in some instances, the report shows a nice looking fund balance, but there's not the cash involved to back that up. So it's kind of a fake fund balance, fake savings account. In the case of Angels Camp, which is good to see, that you look, after you look at the fund balances, that the cash is actually there to cover what the fund balance is. So you're in good shape there. But again, your deficit spending, which is spending down that money, which is a bad thing. This one is just showing you the taxes for the general fund. But major components of your revenue source are the taxes that you collect, property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, the real property transfer to a lesser extent, and then other taxes. As you can see per this particular slide, your property taxes have stayed fairly constant over the last few years. You've had a couple of spikes in sales taxes for fiscal years twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen. But the rationale or the reason for that is something I'm not going to even attempt to try to bring you up to speed. You may have heard of something called the state triple flip. The dealt with sales tax, very complicated component that the state devised a number of years ago. So a lot of that has to do with the way that was calculated and the way it was sent to you. So suffice to say that your sales tax component is actually, these last couple of years, had some decrease, but fairly consistent. And then your transient occupancy taxes, you can see, have again had some positive trends and has stayed fairly flat going through sixteen seventeen. All right, so looking individually at some of the things, property taxes in particular has had an average growth over the past six years of about two point six percent. Your sales tax, again, as I said before, is pretty much in line with what your past trends have been, absent these, those anomalies dealing with the triple flip as far as your eighteen nineteen budget estimate. One of the things that you need to keep in mind however, is that sales taxes has a myriad of ways that you collect that. You have a situation where you get one percent now of everything that's sold, or not everything, but most things that are sold in the Angels Camp proper. They call it a CITIS-based sales tax. But you also get a component of a state and countywide pool that is basically collects money from outside of the state, but is used, or sales are used, things are used in the state. You don't get that CITIS-based, the full one percent, but you get a percentage of the amount that goes into the county pool or the state pool. So all of that is rolled into the sales tax number. So even though there, it's pretty much in line as far as your estimate for eighteen nineteen is concerned, you need to keep in mind that there are those other components that are there that don't necessarily rely strictly on the amount of sales that happened, happens here in Angels Camp. The transient occupancy tax, as I'd mentioned before, the budget estimates for eighteen nineteen seem in line with what has happened in the past. So I think those estimates are okay. License and permits, our estimates seem in line. They've averaged about three hundred thousand over the last few years, but my understanding is there's some things that are coming through for eighteen nineteen that will impact eighteen nineteenth that justifies that additional bump for eighteen nineteen. So we're on board with that. Your intergovernmental revenues primarily consists of the strike team revenue, which is reimbursement from Cal Fire. So those again have spiked, but it's because you know what you're anticipating as far as the strike team and some of the other things that are there. So again, I think that that eighteen nineteen, the eighteen nineteen estimate there is good. And other revenues are, seem like they're in line also. Now moving on to the expenses for the general fund. This gives an indication, same period of time last, or since twelve thirteen, of what your expenses have been by department component. General government consists of your city attorney, city council, city administrator, finance, all the general operational departments that you have is lumped into this component called general government. Public works is pretty much straightforward. Community development deals with your planning and building and the like. Also has public works, excuse me, parks and rec are also included in that. Public safety, police and fire, of course. And then the miscellaneous components that you have, debt service and the like. One thing I wanted to point out here is that the information that I gathered this from is from your reports or budget reports and your actual CAFR numbers. The Angels Camp has changed the way you account for budget and expend those various expenses by using something called cost allocation and labor allocation. As you can tell, looking at fiscal year thirteen fourteen for the general government line, your budget or your actual spent back then was one point two million. And then for fourteen fifteen, it dropped down to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand in your CAFR. The reason for that is that you allocated a lot of those expenses to other funds, other places outside of the, that particular general government component. Finance, even though you expended for finance operation, you charged it off to water or some other fund. That is not unusual in itself. A lot of cities, a lot of entities do that because what you want to show is the true cost, operating cost to provide a service. So if you're providing water service, water doesn't do it by itself. They need their payroll checks cut for their employees. They need, you know, the general items that the council has to deal with on a day-to-day basis to keep them operating. So they need to have those cost allocations. The problem with this is typically what I've seen in my experience is that the, if the council or the city decides to do that, or entity decides to do that, they reverse all of the other past components. So when you're looking at actual comparisons going back to prior years, you can show apples to apples. The way you're doing it here, you can't, there's no way you'll be able to see apples to apples. When you're looking at one audited financial, looking at another, you won't know why, what changed and what flipped. So one of the recommendations that we'll have later on, I'm sure in the final report, is that for these prior components, that if you want to do that this way, you need to make it a little bit more clear or easier for someone to go back and reconcile. So that again, it's an actual, or apples to apples comparison. So you truly can see what your expenditure trend is for general government or public works or public safety or the like. Some individual components on the finance expenditure side. What we found is over the past few years is generally the departments have met or met their operating budget. Didn't find a lot of instances of departments exceeding their budgeted expenditures, which is good. But again, as I said, the issue tends to be, so as revenues kind of tweak and go down and expenditures stay constant, it creates that deficit spending because the situation is that you're not at a mid-year point in time or some other point in time addressing those expenditure fluctuations to meet your revenue expectations. One positive component is the next line, which is salary savings. With the vacancies that every entity has, I mean, even if you started off the year fully staffed, things happen. People leave and it takes time to replenish or to refill those particular positions. And so you create a salary savings. And so that helps you out in cushioning issues that you could have had because just by example, for sixteen seventeen, you had about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in savings, salary savings. And if those salary savings were not there, that deficit that I reflected in a couple of slides back, deficit spending would have been increased by that dollar amount because the salary savings wouldn't have been there to offset. So salary savings are good on one respect, but bad to rely on because you really can't count on them to address any potential deficit spending. And I think I mentioned that they were, the numbers that I'm putting together is based upon CAFR actuals. And then the general assumptions that you're going to meet your budget estimates for seventeen eighteen. All right. Some preliminary recommendations, suggestions for the budget based upon taking a look at the operation, the budget operation here for Angels Camp. The budget format that you use is fairly a simple format, but it's difficult for someone to come in, a layperson or a member of the public, to take a look at your budget document and really get a good understanding of what it consists of. What typically happens, what's considered best practice, is that the budget document should lay out kind of how it's put together, some of the assumptions that were made, some of the past historical information. So somebody looking at your adopted budget can see kind of how that relates to what you've been spending in the past. Your FTE numbers, how many people you have budgeted. That should be again, a part of this overall budget format document. CIP information should be in there as far as what you anticipate spending for your capital improvements, not only for the budget year, but what you've spent in the past and what you anticipate spending in the future, especially for CIP. So one of the things that we would suggest is that that format be enhanced as far as putting together the budget. Make it more reader friendly, make it more user friendly also when somebody is taking a look at where financially the City of Angels Camp is going. Performance measures is another area that we found lacking in how the budget is put together. Performance measures typically show how each individual department is meeting the citywide goals and objectives that have been established by the city and the council. I didn't see, and it may be, Melissa, and I probably should have asked you, if the council or the city has an overall set of goals or core values or any of that kind of standard component where all the departments know, well, that's the goal. And so as I'm doing my particular operation, I'm going to put together performance measures so that the public and the council and the city administrator can see that I'm meeting or heading toward that goal that's been established as a citywide operational objective. So since you don't have those, one of the things I would recommend is that that becomes a high priority for the council to establish that, that set of goals. And to make sure that the departments develop performance measures so that they can show and indicate that they're meeting those particular goals. So everybody's on the same page. Should not beat the deficit spending again, but I'm going to beat it to death. Because this one is a biggie for me. You need to get a handle on that deficit spending. Formal mid-year budget reviews are a must. Monthly closes are a must. You need to have an idea going forward of, if you're again, heading to a situation where you're going to be deficit spending, you need to know that so that things can be changed so that you can address that before June thirty comes and now you're off the cliff, so to speak. You need to have an idea of where you're going. And reviews, monthly reviews, for sure, mid-year reviews are an important component of making sure you have a good idea of where you're going. And what deficit spending actually points to is that in a lot of instances, you're using, besides spending down fund balance, but a number of instances, you could be using one-time revenues for ongoing expenses. For example, if you got a grant and you said, okay, we can now hire five people. The grant is for three years. The people potentially are going to be for, you know, twenty, thirty years. Then what happens once the grant money runs out? Do you lay off the people? Typically, no. You continue to hire the people and then you hunt around for other sources to fill in the blank, or fill in the gap. That is not best practice. That is a recipe for disaster. Because again, you're in a situation where you're reactive as opposed to planning and being proactive in dealing with your financial situation. The, we found that you lacked a formal budget policy that kind of lays out how your budget is being developed, how you're going to build up your reserves and to what levels, how you're going to ensure that the departments are spending the money as the council, as they've been assigned to do. as they've been assigned to do. Your CIP policies, how are you dealing with your infrastructure needs? How are you dealing with your other capital needs and, and building reserves along those lines? What your goals, what your objectives are? All of that typically is laid out in a budget policy. And so again, something that, that city or the City of Angels Camp needs, it keeps the focus overall, not only on a longer term component, but it also makes sure that everyone understands and knows how you're, they're putting, you're putting together your budget. So it's not somebody off doing their own thing as far as the department that is not in line with where the city wants to head. So that formal policy is, is a, is a definite must. And then one of the things I'm going to talk about later on in my report is the five-year look forward model. One of the things that's really important is the mid-year is important, year end, budget planning is important, but that longer term focus is the most important. Because there's some things that could happen where you bite the bullet, or excuse me, you dodge a bullet in one year. But again, as I pointed out before, you're heading for that cliff and you haven't even looked at it. You haven't saw that, you know, somebody's move, a business is moving out of town and so you're still spinning the way you are because they're not moving out of town until three years from now. But you're not looking out three years from now to see what cuts you need to make or reductions you need to make now so that it's not crucial three years from now. So that five-year look ahead is something that, that we will be presenting as, and providing as a part of our process here. Simple model, but it's, it's been real effective in various cities that I've worked for, if when I've developed and tweaked it a little bit, that I think is going to help you with the, maintain that longer term focus. All right, water funds. These are the funds that you actually have, that's included in the next round of slides. Water operations, you have a capital improvement fund that deals with water. You have debt service that's outstanding for water and then capital replacement. So those funds make up this slide. And similar situation, starting with fiscal year twelve thirteen, your actuals in, in the, those water funds and what you're looking at, what you actually budgeted for, for eighteen, nineteen. Need to point out again here, the water funds, that fourth line, you see on the last three years, again, you're into the deficit spending. So it's not just general fund by itself, it's the water fund also individually, or water funds also individually, that you're on that deficit spending trend, which is something that you, that you need to, to adjust. In some instances, the deficit spending in some of these larger capital type funds can be justified if, for example, you collected water fees or rates in anticipation of doing some capital improvement on your water operation later. Then you may collect it in one year, but not spend it until the next year. So the revenues have come in already and the expenditures, so it could throw you in that deficit spending mode. But that's usually something again, that you plan for. So you can address that. It's not, well, why are you deficit spending? It's like, well, I don't know. It just, that's the way the numbers fell. It's like, no, we know that that's coming. We know that that money, revenue is in the fund balance. We always, we have anticipated and planned that it's going to be spent out of fund balance because that's when it was collected. So you're not in a true deficit spending mode. If that's the case, they're looking at your, since you don't have a formal CIP or capital improvement plan and trying to find your capital expenditures, I can't say without a doubt that that's what this is. My indication are, is that it's more flat-out deficit spending. It's not collecting the money to save it for another capital. It's just spending your operation, overspending your operations. So that's something that we'll dig into a little bit deeper as we go through and finish up the report. But the bottom line is again, as I emphasized before, the deficit spending here is also an issue. If you look down on the last column or the last line, cash balance, again, as I pointed out, I wanted to give you all an indication of whether or not your cash that you had supports what you're reflecting as your, in this case, net assets, which is basically the fund balance. And, and you're close on your unassigned for cash, but look at your ending total fund balance, six point nine million, six point eight million, or six point nine million, but cash in the, in all of those funds, five point nine million. So if you basically spent all of your fund balance in one particular year, you would be in the hole over a million dollars in your water funds. So again, not that you're going to do that tomorrow, so it's not where you're going over the cliff, but to give you an indication that, you know, you're heading in that direction. So there's some things that you need to do now to address that particular scenario. Wastewater or sewer funds. These are the ones that are included in this next group of slide, or slides. Sewer operation and maintenance, capital improvement, debt service, capital replacement. Similar situation is the water fund, but this is for your wastewater sewer function. And here's the slide for that. And again, I draw you, your attention to the fourth line, net operating, deficit every single year since twelve thirteen. This one also has some prior print adjustments. I explained to those earlier, this, these, all of these pertain to this pension obligation component in fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen. But again, even absent those, you can see deficit spending in your wastewater sewer function. And those are some larger amounts than in some of the other, especially in the general fund. The deficit spending is, is, you know, you know, half million dollars. Anticipated for the next, or for seventeen, eighteen and eighteen, nineteen. Big problem that, that you need to, to address. Make the determination of whether or not you're spending it in anticip, or on capital that you collected the money in the past for, so you know why you're spending it down or if this is a situation where your operation is just being overspent. Moving down to the last line or next to the last line on this, cash balance. As you can see on the, well, actually before I move to that, if you look at the, the line item above the cash balance, the ending unrestricted, again, the most flexible savings component of your, or the most flexible money of your savings account, that's actually, and if, if everything comes to pass in eighteen, nineteen as budgeted, you will be in the hole on that most flexible fund balance by four hundred thousand dollars. Now the cash, as you look, that next line down, you have almost one point two million. So it's not a situation where you're running out of ca, you run out of cash, but your flexible spending, if something came up, an emergency or something that you needed to do, and it wasn't already programmed where you've set aside some of your fund balance to deal with that, you wanted to do something different. If eighteen, nineteen comes to fruition, you won't have the ability to do that. All right, other funds, and this is pretty much everything else. I'm not going to go through all the lists, but all your, the rest of your funds that I haven't already talked about makes up this next slide, which shows you what that activity is. And again, pointing you to the net operating loss line. Your other funds combined started out in deficit spending mode, but they've gotten better. This particular one, since it includes so many different other types of your funds, what could be the case is that again, the operation, either you didn't spend as much that, of the money that you collect in some of these other funds, and so it created a, a situation where you're doing better. The good thing about it is that if you notice in fiscal year, in the column sixteen seventeen actual and compare seventeen, eighteen and eighteen, nineteen, which is your anticipated component, it's still positive. So you've gone through that budget process in most of your funds, at least cumulative, cumulative on the, these other funds, and you've basically said, we're not going to deficit spend. It's going to come out where we're going to actually increase fund balance as a total in some of these other funds. And you can see again, cash balance for those, it's, it's, the money is there to cover your unanticipated, or excuse me, your unassigned fund balance. But looking at the ending fund balance, again, you have most of your fund balance allocated to other types of operations. So similar to what I spoke about on the last slide, if emergencies came up or you're something that you wanted to do that you hadn't already set aside funds to, to deal with and you wanted to do something different, you don't have the money to do it. Not total, you have some money, but not, not a lot. All right. So what I want to talk to you about now is the go-forward. If, if you do nothing at all, everything is just the way you've been doing it in the past, you continue to deficit spend, you don't put any, or implement any policies, you don't address some of the things that could be coming down the, the pipe later on, I want to give you an indication of what you would look like in all of those particular components, total, general fund, water, sewer and other, what your five-year view would be. And there's some assumptions that I made on this, of course. There are some limited average growth, revenue growth components, assumptions that we've made, some average expenditure growth assumptions that we've made. So you know, there's, the things will change and this particular model can be updated annually by, you know, the finance department to basically include additional things as they become clearer. And it'll roll through and show you based upon a five-year look ahead, what your years will look like, which I think is going to be a real helpful tool, especially for, for the council and the city administrator. Because once you make a decision here, you can load it into the model and it'll show you the impact over the next five years. So looking at the general fund in particular, and again, as I pointed out, since that's the most flexible fund, I want to really emphasize and, and zero in on this particular Operating, let me just explain how this is laid out. What it shows is the total revenues, total expenses, the excess of revenues over expenses, other financing sources, which would be things like your, if you issued debt or some of those type of things, things that are not considered regular revenues or regular expenditures, ongoing expenditures. Then it gets down to this net surplus or deficit, which is the same as the operating income or loss that we've been talking about, that I've been talking about on the last few slides. So zeroing in on that net surplus deficit line, that gives you an indication operationally where you will be, starting with, basically starting with fiscal year seventeen, eighteen as an estimate, what you've actually budgeted for, for eighteen, nineteen. And again, this is your initial budget, not the revised budget that where that deficit has increased. And so applying that assumption or that start assumption, you can see that by fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, you've been, you, your deficit spending will go from, in this instance, fourteen thousand dollars up to two, almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Which again, is the, definitely the wrong way to do that. So you're spending down fund balance at an even higher rate if you do nothing as it stands right now. And by of course, correlation with that, if you look at the last, that last two lines on this, your unassigned fund balance, which is again, the one that individual rating agencies, if you're issuing debt and the like and, and other analytical entities look at when they see how healthy a city is in its general fund, that unassigned fund balance is what they're looking at. Not the total line, they're looking at that unassigned fund balance. Because that money, as I pointed out before, indicates the most flexible spending that you have. If something came up tomorrow and you needed to spend something, you would spend it out of that unassigned fund balance. And as you can see, if you do nothing in the general fund, you would have spent down your, that unassigned fund balance to about four percent of your operating expenditures. The Governmental Finance Officers Association, which is another organization that generally monitors and, and provides guidance on municipal finance, they suggest or recommend at, at a minimum that that unassigned fund balance number be somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen, eighteen percent of your expenditures or revenues. And that doesn't include some of the other reserves that, that you need to kind of zero in on. So as you can see, you're, if you keep on what you're doing, you're spinning it down and you're actually spinning it down to a dangerous level by twenty, or twenty-two, The same indication here on the water funds. Again, similar situation as far as the deficit spending continuing and spending down fund balance. You have a healthier fund balance that has built up over time in the water funds. But again, typically what that is for is for capital needs that you anticipate that you're going to need, water infrastructure, you know, replacing pipes, replacing treatment or a water treatment plants, those type of things. So it's not unusual to have a lot of cash in that fund. The problem or the issue or the concern that we have is that who knows if that's enough? Because you don't really have a formal capital plan so that you know that you need to start setting aside and creating or increasing that reserve by whatever dollar amount as opposed to spinning it away. Same thing with the wastewater. Again, deficit spending there again, and I won't go into a whole bunch of detail. I think the, the slide speaks for itself. In this particular instance, you would actually be spinning down into the nefus, negative if you look at the, the last line for that, for your net assets are the most flexible. So again, the bottom line is that if you do nothing, as I pointed out earlier, when I first did the, first spoke, you're not at that cliff yet, but this gives you that indication that you're heading right over that, that cliff, if you do nothing. And this is the other, other funds. Again, I won't spend a whole bunch of time on that. All right. Some of the issues, and I won't spend a whole bunch of time on that in the interest of time, but some of the issues that, that City of Angels Camp is going to face, just like in a lot of other cities, but this particular for Angels Camp is looking at your unfunded liability for your retirement. That's a biggie, that's statewide a big issue, that your, your particular funding level or unfunded liability level, which says if you had to spend out and stop collecting funds right now, and with the individuals that you have and the individuals that are in the system and that will be in the system, what's the value that you have right now versus what you're going to have to put out through the end of this, the particular term? The difference between those two numbers is what's called an unfunded liability. It's, it's negative. It's money that you, you owe or will owe, but you don't, it's not there now. And so your, for the Angels Camp, their unfunded liability for CalPERS is about, averages about twenty-nine percent of your overall system, system-wide assets. You're underfunded by about twenty-nine percent. So what the PERS, what PERS has done to address some of that, because again, in looking at your retirement system, you want to make sure it's solvent at the end when you need, when they need to pay out some of these, these benefits. What PERS has done is they've implemented a number of things that have changed assumption levels and the like, so that what's happening is it increases the cost to the member agencies. So for example, in the, in the case of Angels Camp, per, PERS's recommended or actuarial estimation, you're going to be spending in a, in a five-year period of time and another, just by looking at the, their, the PERS component, another six hundred thousand dollars a year just for PERS. Again, if you do nothing as it stands right now. So let alone increases in salaries or growth in, in personnel or whatever. I mean, this is just, it's going to happen. So typically you kind of set aside additional reserves. So typically you kind of set aside additional reserves and the like for things like this. Health costs is another situation, the post-employment benefits, health, employee health, retiree health benefits. Again, if you take a look at the actuarial value of the assets versus what you're going to have to end up spending, there's a shortfall there also, which you typically would set aside additional money for, even though you're not spending it or sending it to PERS, you would set aside some type of a reserve to build up to that when you, when you need it. Angels Camp is only paying what's called pay as you go. So if whatever PERS bills you for that retiree health, that's what you pay. Even though what they set, recommend that you pay is X, you're paying Y. So again, that unfunded liability continues to build with no reserves set aside for it. So some of the reserves that, you know, again, you should need to keep an eye on, and I'm not by any means suggesting that Angels Camp set aside money for every single reserve that the GASB organization, or the, not GASB, but GFOA, the Finance Office Association recommends. It's not typical for a city to do every single reserve. But you usually pick the ones that you know are going to be issues, the ones that for pension costs, for example, health costs, for your capital needs, infrastructure needs that you know that's going to come down as long as the city is around. Things for your labor costs that you may have to go through and deal with, you know, workers' comp, you know, those types of reserves, you typically create in this budget policy how you would fund those and to what level you would fund those, based upon what you think is going to be needed down the pipe. So some of these you need to fund in addition to the, just the general unassigned reserve that I had mentioned earlier. You need to specifically set aside or create other reserves and ways to fund those. And again, it may be over a period of time that you get to the level that you want, but the fear, the mere fact that you're establishing a plan to start to build to fund those impacts how you deal with your budgets going forward. And again, gets back to that good, best practice of fiscal planning. Other things that need to look at, economic downturns, it's only a matter of time, it will come. The impact on local and state federal referendums as things come through that you really have no control over, either from the state, I know the state is in pretty good shape right now, but those of you that can recall, the state, every year as a city, we'd be wondering what is going to happen and what they're going to take away from us that we're going to have to now go back and open up our budgets and figure out where we come up with the money. It's not better now, but you know, the federal government is doing some things, so you know, you just need to be aware of those issues that are still coming around the pipe. And deficit spending, pointed out to that, I won't go into that. In summary, what we found overall is the city's ongoing deficit spending pattern is definitely there. And it's not just in one particular fund or group of funds, it seems to be kind of permeating throughout. So that mentality is no problem, we'll just spend down fund balance, which I think is something that you need to really focus on and change to the extent that you can. The unassigned reserve that you have in the general fund as it stands through 18, 19, does meet the GASB requirements or suggestions, recommendations for the unassigned fund balance. But as you can see, if you recall per the slide on the five-year look forward, it won't, it'll be spent down fairly quickly over the next few years if nothing is done. And if the changes are not made, again, in the general fund in particular, as I pointed out, you're going to significantly spend down your reserves to dangerous levels over the next couple, three years. There are some additional operational issues that we did find overall, not particularly relating to finance, but overall, that will be included in our overall, our final report or draft report, that I didn't go into here, but I wanted to throw that out there because it's not where we are doing just this financial review. But we wanted to show you or give you kind of where you are financially as a start. And then you can understand as we build up the rest of the report, as far as your overall operations and the like, that where you have a sound foundation of where you are financially. Some of the steps that we will be talking about in our final report, wealth development strategies, the fact that you need to and will help you develop a kind of a stronger, long-range fiscal planning methodology. Again, don't use one-time revenues for ongoing expenses. Policies and procedures are important to stay on track for, with what you need to do as far as a long-term procedure. Policies that we're lacking here in Angels Camp, I mean, you have some policies here or there, you have some general, it's always been done that way, type of policies where it's kind of that unspoken rule or knowledge of how things are done. The problem, of course, as you can see with that, is anytime you don't have something that's more formal and structured, you get that in, that situation where people can go off and do different things and you really don't know where you're going. You kind of can end up spinning your wheels and not really meeting the goals and objectives that you want to do as a city. So policies and procedures are going to be another important focus for us. Monitoring mechanisms, we found that the use of the Springbrook financial system is limited. And typically what I found is that the departments have that, have access to those types of tools as they do their day-to-day operation, maintaining and monitoring their own, their budget, and are not strictly relying on finance to give them a number and then they just take it as gospel. You don't have that situation here, it's pretty much locked away in finance. And so if finance, for whatever reason, doesn't turn around the numbers or if there's some issues with the numbers, the departments are kind of just out there in the cold. So when the city administrator says, well, what about this, that or the other and what you're going to do about X, Y or Z, you know, it's like, well, I don't know. If I knew where I was, maybe I can do something about it. So it puts that onus back on finance and if you don't have a adequate finance staff, you know, again, you're at that loggerheads, I mean, you're going to basically be at a standstill. So again, changing that, improving your finance, or your technology and making sure people have access to it and training on it is another area we're going to focus on in our report. Communication, making sure everybody understands what's going on is one another thing, and then whatever else that kind of comes up as we fine-tune or finalize the report will be, will be included.
Now the alert.
Yeah. So those of you that are still awake, you know, if you have questions, I guess we'll wait, Melissa, until the council goes back up, okay?
Okay.
Time it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I closed my eyes a couple times because I was like, woo, you see the little white dogs.
It's warmer up here.
It is.
Can we turn the heater on?
Are there any questions from the public before we turn it back to council? No? Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. So if there is, come up to the podium.
So I'm just curious to know what kind of reserve funds would be recommended for the size of budget overall?
Yes, go ahead.
What is standard, pretty standard, I think, just in general, is somewhere in the neighborhood of a 30% of expenditures or revenues set aside for that unassigned fund balance component. Like I said before, that is the component that people zero in on to see how fiscally stable an entity is. You could have other set aside reserves and the like, but they're going to zero in on that unassigned. And that typically, I think, to be, indicate a strong financial situation, the general fund, 30%, you know, the more the merrier, but 30% is probably on average.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question to go along with that, shall I wait?
Ann Forrest, you didn't address debt at all, does the city have any bonds out and is there any debt servicing?
The city does have bonds out. The debt service for the city this size, I mean, you have not a whole bunch of debt, I didn't zero in on the actual indication or the individual debt components, but the city does have debt. I didn't see where that was an issue for the debt service expense. It's again, planned, it's going to be over the next, how many ever years it's remaining on your debt. So I didn't focus on that a lot because it tends to be not an operating expense or an operating revenue, which is where I really, really focus because I want to make sure that the city stays on a fiscally strong basis.
Debbie Pawnee with Destination Angels Camp Economic Development. I just have a comment in general coming on behalf of our board in that we were very pleased to see the council take this action the first of the year. I think there's been a lot of questions and concerns about just where the city stands financially. We certainly get the audit reports and such, but this provided a good overview in taking a look at the future and where we are. And we just see lots of opportunity to work with the council and our citizen groups in turning this around so we don't go off the cliff. And I think it's real possible that we can work together to avoid doing that. So thank you, council, for taking this effort and putting money into this particular report because I know as we looked at our savings accounts and we looked at our deficit spending, this was a big chunk of change to take out of that to be able to get this report. But I think it gives us good, solid information moving forward and I look forward to the community meetings and getting more community input here. Thank you.
Any further public comment, question before I turn it back?
Matthew Stammerjohn, my question is, on your final report, is there any recommendations on increases in sewer and water or things to raise the general fund like TOT or sales tax?
Yes, we'll be making some suggestions. Again, I don't want to call them recommendations because when you're talking about revenues and raising rates and those type of things, it depends on kind of the appetite of the individual entity or agency. But we will be identifying some potential and giving some background information of, you know, how it's worked in other jurisdictions and the like.
Thank you.
Hi, Caroline Scherrato, I had a question about the waste management. It seemed that that was a big piece of our deficit was $500,000. Is there, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but is there an explanation for that? Is that deferred maintenance that was happening or is it just actual deficit?
Well, that's, that's one of the things I'll get into a little bit later on in the final report. What I tried to do here as far as providing the overall is looking at your caper and those type of things and your budgets. And in a lot of instances, it doesn't specify that it was for X, Y or Z, it's not a line item. What I need to do is take a look at the individual line items of the information on the financial system for Angels Camp to make that determination. And my plan is as I go through a little bit more and I can point out some of those things in the final recommendation, because it may be that if you are spending X amount on maintenance, it may be too little in what should be the case. So how do you address what you should be spending in deferred maintenance versus what you are and the fact that you're deficit spending? So we'll be discussing those types of scenarios.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment, questions? Okay, at this point, I will bring it back to council for that. So who, you want to start, Joe?
For Andy, in the financial picture, do you feel like there's anything lingering that you're nervous about, that you don't have data on, that staff wasn't able to provide?
Not really worried about. The only thing that I have is, as this lady, young lady brought up before, looking at the individual line item details to say, okay, I see where your numbers are, understood, but why is that? You know, were you in a particular line item that has gone crazy over the past few years and now it's, that I couldn't tell you. So it's not really a worry because the numbers are what the numbers are at the end in your fund balance, but that's just something that I would want to take a little bit deeper look at. But no, not really anything where I'm thinking, oh my God, there's something that's lurking over the hill that's going to take the city out tomorrow. I didn't get the indication or.
So the 500,000, using that as an example in wastewater, in your final report, with the assistance of the department head, you'll have some.
Right, some potential.
Specific answers about how that got to be the way it got to be.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, first of all, I want to, I want to thank you both for the presentation. The reason that I supported, it was Melissa brought this up to me to do the study, was to generate some kind of consistency or continuity in implementing our policies and procedures. Seems like every time we have a new city manager, every time we have a new city council, something comes up like it's the first time we've seen it, even though we see it every single year and we all have to make our own decision. And so to have something, to get something that we can have in place that can survive, a five-year plan is, you know, it's a wonderful thing because the longest term any of us have in a council is four years. So it'll outlast us and it'll provide a continuity, I think, that we can go ahead responsibly. And it's going to create a new level of professionalism that the city desperately needs. So I appreciate that. I'll be looking forward to hearing some ways to identify some wealth opportunities. My big concern to kind of go to what Joe asked was, is these unfunded liabilities, you know, we're running a deficit spending, yet we have, we have unfunded liabilities in our pensions and our health plans, we have deferred maintenance all over the place. And when you start adding things up, we don't go from, you know, we go from a $200,000 deficit to probably a half million or $600,000 deficit. And even if we get a sales tax increase, you know, that alone isn't going to cut it. So I am more concerned long-term because I think the numbers that we're seeing and that we've been presenting in the past don't tell the whole story. And so again, I'm real happy that we're, we're addressing this now, we're not waiting another two or three years or we'd be in a whole world of hurt. And so I look forward to the final report and hopefully, hopefully we'll get a lot more people involved in this decision, we'll get a lot more, get the word out a lot better, get some outreach and so we can encourage the citizens to get more involved in what's going to be, you know, probably a little bit of pain for a little bit of while. Thank you.
I have to follow up on that. Andy, is there anything going on with respect to the legislature beyond these little adjustments that PERS is doing? Is there any way that there's going to be any relief in that at all for the PERS deficits?
As far as PERS is concerned, I do know for a fact that the, as I pointed out, the pain is going to get even, even worse because the, what the PERS board actually did is they reduced. reduced what's called a discount rate, which is basically directly ties to how much each city is going to have to pay as far as their, what their liability is going to be. It tends to grow it. They actually reduced it from their 750 discount assumption rate to 7%, which would have taken the PERS expenses through the roof. And what they were basically consigned to do, the PERS Board, is to phase it in over a three-year period. So what you're showing or what I put together there as far as your $600,000 hit at the end of five years, that's based on a discount rate of 7.375, which is the latest that PERS has actually gone out to. Next year, it's going to go down to 7.25, and then the following year is going to go down to 7%. So each year, that spread is going to continue to increase. So that $600,000 in year '22, '23, you know, could go for Angels Camp, it could go to $800,000, $900,000, depending on how they do their actuaries over the next few years.
I'd just like to respond to that a little. I've seen a 20-year forecast, I've been working with the city of Sunnyvale in Silicon Valley, and I've seen a couple other cities' forecasts with PERS. And actually, it kind of is ramping up and then there's a sharp decrease. And I forget which year it is actually, but there is some relief in sight, and I don't know when it will occur for Angels Camp, but most of the cities are seeing this spike. And then the effects of the PEPRA law, which is the recent, you know, the modification of the pensions, and some other effects come into play, and you actually start to see that decrease. So we'll look at that, you know, I don't know how much forecasting we can do of it for you, but there is sort of a ramping up and then a sharp decrease that I've seen in a couple other places, just for what that's worth.
And that tends to be, and I've seen them also, it tends to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 years out because that's when the PEPRA kind of kicks in and the whole bit. So, I mean, it's not like it's going to be over the next five or six years. It's going to be at least 10 years out before you see that kind of a relief.
That's one more quick comment for me. I also want everybody to understand that we, about three or four years ago, we did a comp study to compare how much we were paying our employees versus whatever else pays. And we tried to align our salaries and things and benefits, roughly align them, you know, to make it more even across the board. And we have been fairly flat in our salaries and our employee wages, and we're having a hard time attracting good employees. We're trying to hire police officers, firefighters, you know, it's hard to find people to come work for what we're offering. So it's not like we're paying a fortune, we're paying our people a whole bunch of money and these retirement funds are running us up. You know, we're, we're cost, we're pretty lean on the employee side, and so I think that's important information for the public to understand.
I was just wondering, a little bit just information, background information on PERS. I thought I had read that part of the problem recently has been that they did some poor investments, and then I thought that also that some of the cities were going to the state to ask for some help and the state refused. Is that something I heard correctly or is that sort of just...
From my understanding, I mean, the PERS, just like anybody else during the issues of recession components, did get into some, it wasn't bad investments, it's just the way the investments went. So their returns were a lot less than what they had assumed. For quite a number of years, the PERS assumption was that they would earn 7.5%. And by and large, if you look back 30 years, they've probably averaged pretty close to that, but then the 2008 issues happened and it really just kind of wiped out a lot. So what the PERS basically, or what CalPERS did, is looking at actuarial, they look at the, and do, perform actuaries every year, actuarial assumptions every year, but they take it out quite a number of years. And so the staff basically said, hey, you know, if we keep along this trend, we're not going to make the 750 average earning, and so we're going to run out of money, and so we need to make some changes. Their staff recommended to the board to make some changes, amortization length changes, discount rate changes, mortality rate changes. I mean, there's a lot of their assumptions that they changed, and to be a little bit more conservative, that is kind of what's, where the cities and entities now are seeing that they're paying more each year.
But also, this is more than just a PERS picture. As you saw in the revenue graphs, you saw kind of a flat sales tax and a fairly flat property tax. And this is another part of the reality for cities across the state, no matter where they were, rich or poor cities. The recovery has not brought on the same proportion of new revenue as it has where we've seen the expenses increasing, but revenues just aren't growing at the same rate that they've grown in the past. So that's part of the dislocation for cities. It seems to get, the conversation seems to be about PERS costing too much, but part of the reality is revenues have not recovered the way they have in the past. And so that's another factor that has to be discussed. It isn't, you know, I hate to see it all laid on the cost of employees. And we did find in looking at Angels Camp, you are extremely lean. You do not have any extra employees at all. It's amazing how much your employees produce individually and what they're doing, the weight that they're carrying for this community individually. So there's not an instance here where you have too many people and you're paying them too much at all. So like, you know, you said, it's more of how do we get our revenues in line with what our expenditures need to be to have the service level that you want in Angels Camp?
Yeah, I have felt the same thing about the staff. As I've been on the city council, I'm just amazed at how much they accomplish. And we're very short, I mean, we're just tight, so I'm very pleased and proud about that. I've really taken that in a lot and appreciated it. The thing that I also like that you have brought up is goals and policies. I kind of see in our need as a city is that the council needs to spend more time, we need to have looking at the goals and the policies so that we can establish more of a clear view of where we're going and what we're doing. It's just, we are not all coordinated in that, you know, the council needs to kind of give direction and then that helps for city administrator and everyone else to know, and then the different department heads. And so I'm very pleased, I think that is a very important part of what we need to be doing, and I really am looking forward to you helping us because it's not always that easy to do. I mean, it's amazing. I know that I was on a school board and we called somebody in and they helped us and we got a vision and we did, and everybody was like, oh, phew, finally, you know, we know what we're doing. And so that's, I really think, and we needed help to do it. I just don't know if we could do it without help, really. So I'm really pleased that you're doing that.
Well, I think that after the three council members, I'm probably going to reiterate most of what they said. First of all, I want to thank you, and I am glad that the council did say, yes, let's get this report. As Debbie had pointed out, it, it's an expense and we knew it, and we did get some pushback from the public in regards to spending the money to have your firm come in and do this. I think personally, it's money well spent. I love Angels Camp, it's a wonderful place to live, I would like to see it thrive, and I don't want to go off the cliff. And I appreciate that you are very adamant about the deficit spending having to stop and that you also are pointing out that there, there's ways to get a handle on it. And I think as much as we love a very small town, the policies have to be put in place and set. You have to have rules and regulations to know how to function and how to function properly. It's just like raising kids, you know, lay down the law. I did pick up on, you were saying that the Springbrook system isn't the best in regards to being able to analyze and really look at the finances. And I was wondering, do you have a, I hope that you have a suggestion of maybe an alternative?
Well, the, what, maybe I didn't make myself clear. The Springbrook system in itself is typically a fairly good system.
Okay.
What, the point I was trying to make is that it's not utilized like it could be so that you could, would provide you with the opportunity for the staff to even do a better job than what they've already been doing to kind of keep things going. So what was, what had happened was the Springbrook system is kind of focused in a certain department or a couple of departments, and what I'm, we're more than likely will be recommending is kind of spreading that out, improving that, the accessibility and utilization of the system so you can get a better, kind of get a better bang for your buck.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad that that is, there's an expansion that is, you know, readily available to us. And I do want to say thank you to staff, I want to say thank you to all the employees. And I, we know they do run on a shoestring budget and they really get things done. I think that all of the employees care about Angels Camp, and I think that is the one thing that makes a big difference. And we do have wonderful citizens that truly care, and as much as we all might hate it, we'll probably all have to bite the bullet. And there's probably some things that are going to come down that, you know, which way do you want to go?
Well, and I'd just like to address that, too, because I know there's a lot of concern and anxiety anytime you're talking about budgets and deficits and worry for people about their jobs and about what the future holds for them. And really, much of our report is going to include recommendations about a cycle of practices, things you begin to do annually regularly, every three months, every two months, and six months. So not so much about a lot of, you know, drastic changes that have to happen, but more about secular practices, good, solid budget practices. Many cities have their budget policies right in the budget document, and they adopt a series of policies, and they're right there for the public and the departments and everyone to see. And this is how we're going to do that. And so we're going to come back with things like that that aren't so much, you know, a solution instantly, but they begin to build the types of practices that you need here to create wealth. And then we do have some wealth creating suggestions that we'll have. So just as you're beginning to look forward to it, I want to remove the anxiety around we're coming back with some drastic sort of series of things that are terrible.
Right.
That doesn't mean there'll be some painful decisions perhaps that you all want to confront and make, but most cities, to get on the path to where you want to be, it's a series of decisions over time and a series of good, strong, disciplined practices that you start doing again and again and again, and that starts building where you want to be.
And if I can just add, totally agree, and those practices that are done over time are understood unilaterally, or generally, by the public, by the council, by the departments, you know, that everybody knows kind of where the city is heading, and here are the things that we've all agreed to, to get there, and so that's where we're going as opposed to being concerned about what's coming around the corner. Well, you already have a plan. So if you have something that comes through that's an anomaly or whatever, you have a plan to adjust, that you need to adjust to make sure that that stays on track, so.
Thank you. I'm hopeful.
I don't want to go into repeating much of what the most, the rest of the council has said, but I do have one question. With the recommendations in the final draft, would that also address some of the mandates that the state should be coming down the pipe over the next couple of years as well? Or are there going to be things that we're just going to have to factor in as they get through the legislation down to the local level?
Again, given the fact that we don't know what is actually going to come down, to the extent that we know when we finalize the report, we'll at least provide some general observations and comments. If we, if there's something that makes sense to actually provide as a recommendation, we'll include it. But what the report won't show is something like kind of pie in the sky, maybe somebody's been talking about X, Y, or Z, and so you need to do something to address that. We won't focus as much on that. I think it's more important to focus and develop a plan based upon what you know and the small periphery of what you, what may come down versus so far out there that, you know, you're spinning your wheels and creating a bunch of havoc that may or may not, may not happen. So hopefully, what we're going to try to do is to have those type of observations and recommendations in a more realistic realm. So again, it's not where the report will be challenged that, you know, you don't really need to do that, it's not even on the horizon. It's like, well, yeah, what we're talking about is realistic things, so.
Well, and in a way, partly to answer that, the best practices all involve a diversification of what you're doing.
Right.
So just like for your own investments or as you have a business, you try to anticipate all the different ways that you can be impacted and look at maybe different things than you've thought of before because the cities that are surviving well now are ones that clearly are diversified. They're not reliant on one single source of revenue or one single thing happening for their town. They're looking at how they can create some diversification, so you'll see that, too.
Okay. And thank you for, I know this was a long, this is a difficult decision, and I'm glad that, to see that the council is going forward and we have participation from the public. Curious to hear what comes out of the next two meetings tomorrow from the public. I think that's important for everyone to be actively involved in hearing the same thing that we're hearing because these are difficult decisions that we have to make up here, and it's important that we're being transparent with you guys to understand why we're doing what we're doing. It's just not coming out of, you know, left field to make these decisions, whatever may come. So I'm really happy with that for being proactive about that and reaching out and making this, making this happen. And so thank you, everyone, for putting this report together and getting this going.
Mayor, if I might add one more thing. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for your commitment and investment in this effort and also to recognize the conservative approach over the last few years that have really looked at the reduction of salaries, contracting out positions and those alternatives to cutting costs, and that I'm grateful we have this opportunity to now look at opportunities for increasing revenue and growth and wealth generating opportunities within the city. So I thank you for that direction. I also would like to, as so many mentioned, recognize our staff and the contributions that they make day in and day out. They've weathered the last three years with cuts and frozen positions and doing more with less, and so they are the heart and soul of the city and that's what keeps us going. So I'm thankful to them and I'm thankful for their willingness to see us through this process because it is a team effort of both the council and your policy objectives and the staff and our willingness and commitment to see this through. So with that information, I would also like to let the council know that it's my recommendation that we come out with this report after or mid-November, pending the results of the November ballot initiative, so that we might be able to move forward with more realistic goals, recognizing the reality of the potential sales tax measure that we have before us, and then also put together a realistic timeline for implementation based upon the outcome. So with that, that would be my recommendation, is that we have this, the draft report after the November election. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council might have or any concerns that you might have with that, but I just think that that could guide your discussions and your decision-making as it pertains to the draft report and any recommendations that may come out of that report. And then, thank you, Andy and Jane. If you have any other things that you'd like to follow up in terms of that, please feel free, but other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Based off of Melissa's comment, is that contentious for council to go ahead with that? that recommendation?
I'd like to ask Andy and Jane what they think of that. So the sales part, sales taxes, that's, that's, it's an important part, but that's just one part of the overall report. And can we get started on something else, or is there something else that we could know sooner that would help us out, or do you think the timing in late November is a good idea?
Yes, we, in, in thinking through what we've learned so far, we do need a little more time to do a little thorough investigation before we begin to write up our report. There's a lengthy process for us internally, and we, we thought that actually that process of holding the workshop and reporting the report out and allowing feedback from the community and hearing about it would be better done once you understand, you know, where you sit, because then it's not like what if, it's like here we are, and we have all the full set of information. So we do think it's a wise idea for you as well.
Great, thank you. Do you need a motion on that to bring that back?
Direction, fine, thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Staff, clear? Good.
You got the nod.
Okay. There's no other, is there any other public comment before we go on to the next agenda item? Otherwise, we will close this and move on. Oh, good. With that, we will go on to agenda item number seven, correspondent. So we have two items under correspondent that staff has provided us. Item A is the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, June two thousand and eighteen marketing highlight. And the next item is article on why cities need to be eventful, by Eventful Cities. And Melissa has been providing, so basically, staff has been providing us extra reading for us, and highlight two different organizations, such as the Visitors Bureau or any, any other local organizations on how they're doing, so we can keep up with it, and other newsworthy information that they feel pertain to us. So there's really not much of discussion unless a council member would like to comment on it.
I was interested in one thing. I was, well, actually, I, and I read all the event, one was, you know, very important, I think. You know, and we've already gone in that direction, I can see, you know, towards having more events, and I think that's, you know, a good one to continue, continue to prosper and increase that. Then, but I also was seeing the marketing highlight from the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, and I thought maybe that if Lisa's, I think if Lisa's still here, I didn't know if she could just comment on, I was noticing that the walk-ins are down, and I didn't know if she wanted to explain, you know, more kind of what's, what this marketing highlight informs the public. Okay, thank you.
So Lisa Walton, Calaveras Visitors Bureau, yeah, happy to respond to that. So these reports, by the way, are public on our website. Anybody can download them. Just go to the Partners Corner on gocalaveras.com, and you can download them all. And we're actually very proud of our marketing highlights, because we do outstanding work, and we have very good ROI. So one interesting trend that we have noticed that is across the board in the tourism industry is that people are tending to get their information online as opposed to coming into visitor centers. And in fact, Betsy Utley, who is the general manager of Worldmark here in Angels Camp, has an almost identical correlation between the number of people coming into their concierge service and the increase in the web visits where people are getting their information online. So you'll notice that we do a comparison year over year, so we always compare, compare each month to the previous year, that same month. And you'll see that the walk-in to the Calaveras Visitor Center for the month was down by seventeen percent. But in addition, you'll see that our web visitors for that same time period were up by sixty-three point nine percent. Phone calls were also down by six point eight percent. That's another indicator. People are using online channels to, to do their research on destination travel. So that is across the board, a trend that is occurring. We, we'd like to kind of buck the trend and try and mitigate that a little by maybe increasing our signage on the visitor's center and making it really obvious that it's a gift shop as well as visitor information, and then maybe we'll have more people coming in if they realize there's a bigger retail experience for them there.
Yeah, let's, you know, thank you, because I wasn't sure of kind of why the dip, and I had thought probably it was for that, because I saw the, but I wanted to just reconfirm that.
Absolutely. Are there any more questions?
Just want to point out on that, the visitors, you're talking about a couple hundred. On the webs, you're talking about tens of thousands. So as a percentage, the walk-in traffic is not a lot compared to the overall traffic, the overall experience.
So the numbers are down, yeah, the walk-ins for this?
It's a very small number compared to the web hits.
It is a very, yes.
Right, so that's, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Any other? No? Thank you, Lisa.
No, and I would just like to point out, I'm sorry I didn't include it, but the article on why cities need to be eventful was information shared with us by Destination Angels Camp.
With that, next item is council reports, and I will start to my right with Councilmember Oliver.
Nothing to report.
I have no report.
Vice Mayor? Well, one thing at the COG, and, well, we had the Calaveras Transit Agency meeting, which now we have formed a new JPA. But just that the new schedule is coming out, and there's some improvements on the bus schedule, but it isn't there yet where we're exactly where we want to be. But there's improvements of making sure to be able to respond to the various areas that have the greatest needs, and working on that Columbia, you know, connection. And also, the Saturday hopper has been doing really well this, this summer.
I would just like to say that even with the heat and even with the smoke, the farmer's market is actually a nice cooler place, and the smoke usually stays up a little higher. So don't be afraid to come on out on Fridays and, you know, find out what's going on down at the farmer's market. There's usually great music and locals, you know, selling vegetables and fruits and, and snacks, et cetera. Also, different food is being provided, and of course, there's the wine and beer through Akba and I think DAC, or maybe just Akba. But it's a fun place, and it's cooler. It's a nice way to end the week, so come to the farmer's market.
I have nothing to report, but I do want to say thank you to the rest of council members who stepped in during my absence the last couple of weeks, and staff for keeping me in the loop of what has been going on. I've been down at the Ferguson fire, and then this week I just got reassigned to the new fire on the one oh eight. So I've been kind of in and out, and I just want to thank everyone for helping me out during this, this time, so. And then with that, calendar, with, I wanted to make sure, I know most of everyone here knows, but please spread the word, that we do have two more presentations tomorrow. So if, you know, someone that did not, was not able to come tonight, tell them that the meetings will continue tomorrow, which I don't have the time, and thank you.
Okay, tomorrow, that's the eighth. We will do these meetings with City Gate at seven thirty a.m. and twelve p.m., and this is at the Firehouse in Angels Camp. Thursday, the ninth, at six p.m. is Planning Commission at the Firehouse. The fifteenth, Wednesday, the fifteenth, at ten a.m. is COG's Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, and then IRWMA meets at nine a.m. in the TUD offices. Thursday, the sixteenth, at eight thirty a.m., we have a Museum Commission Meeting, and then ten thirty a.m. is the DAC Executive Committee Meeting at the DAC Conference Room. The, Monday, the twentieth, at three forty-five, is a Solid Waste Task Force Meeting in San Andres Town Hall.
Maybe.
Maybe. That's always a maybe. And then we'll, we'll be at the Firehouse at six p.m. for City Council on the twenty-first.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.